This conference will now be recorded.
I'm just worried that the regular dirt service won't wear up well for a possible year under that heavier load with traffic. But what do I know about roads? None of it, so I have to take other people's opinion. It'll stand up.
Alright, so we're called to order the Monterey Select Board February twenty second. Couple minutes later at six oh two P M. All three members are present here in town hall and are joined by Jim Hunt, Director of Operations. Thanks for joining us.
Mickey Jervis on the phone.
Hi Mickey.
Hi Mickey. We, last time we met with you, a month or two ago, we talked a little bit about the detour. About doing a light or not, and I think the consensus of the board was to not pave Lover's Lane. Mostly for the aesthetics, at least that's where I'm at. Although it is a costly, light fixture.
That's true. I did get a, only just that one price back. And they forwarded to you all, Rosie. And it was a little bit questionable, maybe they threw it out there for purchase too. And since then, what I found is that Milton Caterpillar, they have a division, Milton Rents. They don't do it anymore. United said, nah, we don't have any. So a lot of these figure off with companies are sort of getting away from it. That kind of concerns me as far as the option to buy. Why aren't they getting out of it? It's either not profitable, or it's a real, a real drag to maintain or something. Got a reason they're not doing it. So just, on that part.
So you contacted Milton Caterpillar, but they don't do it anymore, so okay.
Yeah, they just sold that out yesterday. Since all this, just today, we got a response back from Mass DOT. And basically, they said, brick replacement project is currently scheduled to welcome bid in the fall of twenty twenty four. It's all coming out. With the start of the construction likely to begin in the spring of twenty twenty five. There's a change in that schedule. We'll let you know as soon as we know. Typically, construction, this is, doesn't necessarily mean the project is this long. So typically, a construction contract lasts for two years. So they probably give themselves plenty of wood on each side to get started and, and get finished up, you know?
So we're actually looking at not next season, not this coming season, but the following one?
Yeah, so we just, according to this, we just bought ourselves a little bit of time. So that's good.
Because it won't, it's not going to have to bid this fall, it's going to have to bid.
Correct. Next, so another year plus from now, so.
Is the bridge ready?
No, I don't believe they are. Who puts that together? That's Mass DOT working on that. They actually have an engineering firm that they're, that they have working for them.
So all of this is hinged upon their speed to get that done.
Correct. Correct.
So we do look at F Y twenty twenty five?
Correct.
For the actual construction?
You know, a calendar year twenty twenty five.
Yeah, I think you just said bidding in the fall of twenty four.
Bidding the fall of twenty four, so that's a year plus from now.
Fourteen months.
Correct.
And then hopefully starting about eighteen to twenty months from now.
Correct.
So would the construction would be spring, it's spring of twenty, calendar year twenty twenty five, but what fiscal year is that?
Well, and it would be the.
It would be the end of twenty five.
End of twenty twenty.
End of twenty five, yeah, end of the year twenty five. So what that means for us is that the planning that we're doing now, I had kind of been just pushing a little bit so that we could get some money built into this budget cycle for, because we're responsible for the detour and whatever expenses come with that. So that's what we're trying to do. So I think we've, it's, it's safe to say that at this point, we really don't have to get too concerned about that part of it. I think it'd be smart to keep going with plans, you know, and what do we want to do? As far as, you know, what our options are. Sort of related, sort of not related. Gould Road does need pavement. There's a small section of River Road that needs pavement. So I've included some numbers in the Franklin County group purchasing program that was submitted today. So we'll see how that comes back. I suspect it's probably in the two hundred range. And again, we have a small job on Fox Hill that was in the, in that Franklin County bid two years ago. It's been approved by Chapter ninety and allocated by Chapter ninety four. For two years now. I believe that part of the issue of getting contractors on it is just, it's, it's a sixty five thousand dollar job and it's, you know, the, the numbers just aren't there to mobilize all that equipment to do a full depth reclamation. So hopefully this, if, if we can add this to it. It'll make the Fox Hill job more, more attractive and a couple of smaller ones.
Who puts that out to bid? Does the state put that out to bid?
Uh, we're, we use Franklin County, Franklin County Regional Planning.
And small companies like.
Oh, who would bid it?
Pete's and Sheffield, wouldn't they do something small like that?
Uh, it's, it's bigger than that. It's a, it's a two hundred thousand dollar job.
I think this is sixty five.
Well, for Fox Hill, yes.
That's the point, that's what I was.
Possibly.
You were saying that we're out of trouble getting somebody to do a small job.
It's already been bidding, all that, that whole thing has already been. Those numbers have already been all worked out with Franklin County, here's something Sean had done quite a while ago.
And it still holds even though they haven't actually done the work?
The, I'm sure there's a clause in there for.
Basically says this page, avoid the date.
Right. They're, I'm sure, you know, they've got something in there to protect themselves, and see, everybody does.
Would the, the surface you currently have on Lover's Lane, for lack of a better word, to call it, if you left it as is and put the light up, do you feel like it would hold up to the traffic during the detour?
I'm reluctant to say yes coming out of mud season, the, the current mud season.
Does that road typically have the same type of mud problems? I mean, some roads seem to have some doubt.
No, actually, that, that, that road typically holds up fairly well. I'll see a fair amount of traffic, especially Wednesday, Saturday and Sunday. The last four or five years, we've been sort of anticipating this. So when we have kind of a free day or a free couple hours in the afternoon, we'll put two layers of gravel. That road's been coming up, we'll be building it as you get higher, get a little wider between the banks. So we've, we've, we've put quite a little bit of effort into there to have a good base in it.
Can that continue, that practice throughout the two thousand and twenty five?
Absolutely.
Project?
Absolutely.
By then, we might be a foot wider, six inches taller also.
At the narrowest point, that's about fifteen or so feet wide currently. Whereas Sabre Road's twenty four, most of Gould is twenty two to twenty three, in that range. Just to give you an idea for comparison's sake. So it's definitely not. Small cars could probably flip their mirrors, but we'll get through them, you know, get through them, so. That's where that is.
Is there any other input that you need from us at this point in time?
No, I don't, I don't think so. You know, we just wanted to make sure that you were up to date on where we were with that. And then, this is good news for us now. Again, Chapter ninety eligible for, for paving the rest of that section. And I know that doesn't address the gravel side of it, but. You know, if that's what the, what the town wants, we'll, we'll keep it maintained, it'll. I'm sure it'll keep us busy. You know, fuck.
In this one person.
It is what it is, you know?
So, and you're talking about paving the, the section, the small section of River Road, between river and the gravel section on Pooled Road, and then after, between the gravel section and the next gravel section?
Correct.
Yeah, and that's two hundred thousand, about how? Okay.
I'm totally unclear as to what you're paving on River, River Road now?
So there's a little section between where Gould Road comes out, where Lover's Lane comes out, or the bridge that's there. Between there and Dean Hudson's driveway, there's a seam there, so from that seam up to main road.
Right over the bridge?
Right over the bridge.
Okay.
And then the short section of Lover's Lane, as you go up the hill, just across the hill, there's two driveways at the top. It ends roughly at that driveway.
Hill, Paco driveway.
Right.
So from there down is a quasi pavement that's already for washout.
Right.
And that's the section that you're referring to, the repave?
Correct. And then.
Yeah.
From the, just a little bit between the transfer station and highway garage, at the foot of the small hill there, where the pavement starts again. From there, all the way up to the farm.
Well, that's already pavement anyway, so nobody's going to.
That's correct, that's correct, yeah, yeah.
It's not paving anything new, it's just repairing existing.
But this is all part of.
And that's all Chapter ninety?
Correct. And that, this just ties everything together as part of that.
So there's only going to be a little section that's.
And that's the only reason I brought it up, is like you said, there's a little short section there. And, and you know, people are pretty passionate about preserving that, and I respect that, that's just fine. You know, I just have to throw all the options.
Absolutely. I think that, now that we have two years, there's a survey, you know? We can fix this road once and for all, or it's two lanes, and we're going to eventually save seventy thousand dollars by having the light there. Chapter ninety covers it all.
Right.
It just is, you just have to let people decide.
Correct.
You know, it's, it's a small, small amount.
Right.
But it is a change.
It is.
What happens to, say, the maple trees that Gould Farm has been harvesting for sixty years?
Right.
They go.
They're tapped out.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, it, probably fourteen of those would be on.
Would be history. If you don't get, don't get more growth maples back.
Not like that.
Yeah.
Not, not anytime soon.
So I mean, that's just part of, part of the concern.
Right.
But.
There's a big pine there that, you know, who knows what kind of shape that'll be in in ten years, and there's another big maple there that is, is declining. That, that, you know, at some point, we all reach our end of.
What type of right of way do we have on either side? Is there one, is there more on one side or the other that we could take to expand that road so that it is a point four feet wide?
To the right, we would go, well, to the south side, yeah, and take that little bump out there. So it'd be the same width.
Gould Farm's field side.
Right.
Like the dump of the transfer station side.
Correct. Yeah.
And that's from Paco's driveway to the transfer station?
Not quite, no, it's only sixty feet. It's not a tremendous distance, it's only just an old bump out that comes out there.
But you pave from the bottom of the hill.
That's correct.
All the way up to the main house of Gould Farm.
The pavement would be contiguous instead of having the dirt section?
Well, I find, I drove it this weekend and realized how short the gravel section actually is. But there's a reason why it wasn't paved before now. There's a reason why we are where we are.
It's thirteen hundred feet of gravel.
From the top of Paco's to the transfer station, it's only thirteen hundred?
Are you talking about from the transfer station up to the farm?
No, that's, that's closer to four thousand feet.
Yeah.
The whole thing is, is just shy of a mile, the paved section.
From River Road all the way to the other end?
Okay, so we're on, are there any remaining questions on that?
So that money that was in a special article, did that get put into a special article?
It has not.
We never did.
Right, it was still holding on.
Right.
Yeah.
But I think now we don't need to do it for this A T M, is that correct?
Yeah.
Yes, that's my understanding. Okay.
So that's good news, you know, maybe the rental will be up a little bit more then, I mean, as we know, every year things are rising, but we won't need it.
Where, if we wanted to sort of get a sense of where folks in town stand on whether they'd rather have us pave it with Chapter ninety or do the detour. Do the, not the detour, do the lights and leave it dirt, what would be the right venue to do that?
Annual survey.
Do we do it, but it would have to be this year, wouldn't it?
And just as a, as a survey.
Okay.
You know, something that spells out what, you know, what, what it is that we can achieve.
Put it on the warrant or leave it separate?
I think separate.
Could you do a binding question or something?
Just, I don't know how to do it.
It's possible, we could look into it if, if, I mean, I mean, my sense.
This really is a survey.
My sense from not scientifically doing a survey, but before a post.
Oh, yeah.
I suspect so, but I, I just don't like to, to guess.
Total aspects as to what, you know, why.
Seventy thousand, eighty thousand dollars, you know, like, yeah, you know?
You know, it'd be similar to back when, you know, I remember as a kid when Blue Hills gravel, that, that got paved and it's been repaved. So at some point, somebody made changes there, you know, same with that, more section of Ferry Road there, you know, that got paved. In the last about twenty years, probably.
Yeah, about, so.
But I kind of like the idea that we put it out there and say, here are the, here are the options we have, here are the pros and cons of each one. We'd like to hear from you guys.
Absolutely.
Um, which, which you prefer and why? And like, so we have to spend an hour reading through them, like, so what? Like, I'm willing to do tally numbers, but I'm curious what, because, you know, sometimes the, the pool of people you talk to isn't necessarily representative. I think I do know how, I agree with you. I think it'll probably come out that way, but then we'd have the numbers to show it, and we could say we asked everybody, and you had your chance to drop them.
Alright, that's a plan.
So, do you want to throw something out there, or do you want me to throw something out there that we can then hand out? Uh, we could do it in the monitoring, but I sort of feel like having, having something there that people could just fill out right at town meeting and hand it in would make it.
And have it a vote.
Yeah, that's true.
You might, you might get more people.
That's very true.
I mean, at least, you know, our second home population may have something to say about it.
This is very true.
Which is important. No doubt.
So not to get out of, out of order or anything, but there was one more, one more item there?
Yes, the tractor. Yeah, I mean, I think it seems like a good idea. To purchase the tractor loader for.
Absolutely.
And we have it, we have it banked, um, yeah.
Let's do it.
Interchangeable implements.
As long as you were willing to get behind that, we'll go ahead and get that along.
Fixing the other one doesn't seem like an option, so let's do it.
Yeah, but so everybody understands that the biggest concern with the fellow that came over, he's, he's an old time farm guy from over New York State that. The cab is in pretty rough shape. I didn't realize how bad the rollover structure is on that. He started peeling back some covers and said, hey, you know, he got hurt right through here. And that's, that's kind of a liability, it's very much a liability for the town.
What happens to it now then?
We'll dispose of it, I mean, it's a bid.
Nothing, no fifty bucks for junk, nothing.
Well, we'll, we'll auction it, I mean, municipal.
Yeah.
He, um.
Even then, we're not liable for something that goes.
No, we'll go off for, for, for parts as is.
Yeah. And maybe we just, we just disclosed that it's.
It's as is.
That it's as is, yeah, and that we can even disclose that we know that it's, uh, got that problem. So then, if they choose to get it, they're probably taking it by parts anyway.
And the fellow that we shared, he, he indicated that because parts are not readily available, and that was a pretty desirable piece of equipment back in its day, that there's probably a used market for it, for, for parts, you know? So, but it's, it's, the time's up.
How much is that machine going to run?
Um, it keeps going up so fast, we're, we're in the ninety five range.
Can that get locked in?
Yeah, yeah, we'll lock her in. As long as y'all are buying it, we'll get.
Do you need money for a mowing deck? Or no?
No. It'll be good to go. Alright.
Alright.
Very well. Just a quick question. I saw somewhere on the budget when it was in this quasi infancy, you had a line item that had other items in it. That, you know, otherwise we'd have five hundred line items. And one of them was eighty five hundred for subscription to weather station.
We don't do it anymore. While we do, well.
What's that? What?
So the current one will be the monitoring stations that we have on twenty three, the three of those. It's the hosting and the maintenance of those.
So that's what that, that represented?
Yes, and there used to be another weather subscription that we used.
So.
D T N weather, and we stopped using it because these have been so accurate for us that, it was like, no, four thousand a year, it took off.
What are they determined?
We have cameras on all three of them.
Yeah.
So we can actually see the road surface. The one in front of the firehouse measures about twenty different parameters, including the subsurface temperature, surface temperature, surface state, wind speed, air temperature, precipitation, dew point, all the factors that we have to look at all the time. It will send us alerts, we have it currently set that.
I was just curious what that, what that represents. I figured it had to do with those two stations.
It's so, it's become such an integral part of what we're doing with this weather, the way it's been right now, the threshold of snow and ice. That, that, it's, that's the tool. And we started our, our weekend winter watch program, and the fellows are sharing my credentials, and they're looking at it when they're on, on watch on the weekend, and so they all have an idea of what. You know, what might be coming, they can look at it today and say, you know, yeah, hey, he might be calling me in, so I did it early.
So it, so it does say on here, I found, finally found it, hundred fifty five eighty, eighty five hundred, is that, did, did I hear you say that's not that amount anymore, or it's now a different?
No, that should be that amount.
Okay.
Yes, yeah.
I think it, I just.
Does that, does it say vice ala there and?
It just says weather station subscriptions eighty five hundred, yeah.
Yeah.
Definitely won't find it, but I got it. Good narrative.
Yeah, should be that. I can, I'll show you one more when we got there.
Yeah.
Have fun with that tonight.
I'll get out the window myself.
Well, you know, here's, here's the other thing.
No, I understand scientific.
We all live a little ways away, and, you know, for instance, it's, out by Gaffards, it's starting to cover the road now.
And that's on your.
Down at fifty seven, it's just wet.
Yeah.
You know, there could be a four degrees difference in temperature, so it doesn't warrant calling four guys in it. Only warrants calling the guy who has that route. You can take care of that.
It actually does that, it'll all, it'll call whoever has that route only?
No, we, we still do that. But it will send me an alert for when the air temperature and the dew point meet at thirty two and a half degrees.
Yeah.
Things are about to go really, really bad for us. And it'll, it'll throw an alert and a nice warning, so. Yeah, it's pretty neat. But we should be watching it closer than that and, and already know.
Thank you, Jeff.
Very.
Thank you. And you?
Not for me. Drive carefully.
They're rolling solid.
We're going backwards down any roads tonight, okay? That would be good.
Have a good night.
You too.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Item two is the agreement about solar consulting.
So did, I couldn't catch what she found, like, what did Donna tweet?
Oh, it was very different.
Oh, okay.
I don't know if you saw the first draft, but it was maybe three pages. It had the scope of work, she didn't change anything substantive to what the, they're going to do, but she added in conflict of interest, and all of these legal things, insurance and.
The supplemental terms and conditions, that, okay.
I think that's a gist of it.
Okay.
She, because there, at one point was concerned that she was changing the scope of work, but she was just changing the legal part of it to protect the town, so. I don't have any questions or concerns on it. I did file a disclosure of the appearance of conflict of interest because I'm on the fire company.
I saw it.
But I'm not in leadership on the fire company, and I don't see that looking into solar panels on fire company buildings would impact me financially, so.
I definitely don't see a conflict of interest, and even if there were potential, I think that you could be able to separate it out, but I don't see it, so. Okay, so does it only require your signature?
Yeah, but, um, do you have any questions on that?
I'm ready to go.
Alright, I'd move, move to accept the agreement with Beacon Integrated.
Yeah.
Any other discussion on that? Call a vote?
That is.
Yeah.
And yes, let's see an unanimous approval, so I will sign a copy of that. Item three is a noise bylaw, which I don't expect we will spend a lot of time on tonight, but I did go ahead and. Draft one.
The only, but I'm not a huge fan of any bylaws, to be honest with you, but. The one, I think it was number three, and then you do cover it again at the end about farm animals?
Yes.
But I, I, it almost looks like there's a conflict between three and your final one stating that farm animals are allowed to make noise.
Yes.
So somewhere in there, during the time of approval of such a contract, we would have to work that out.
Yes, and so this, that's the way Paxton had it drafted. I actually don't have the Monterey one with me.
Oh, I have.
You do. But I thought about the animal noises one a bit, and I figured if someone's dog is barking for four hours a night, that could be relevant. You know, the police could say, your dog's barking four hours a night, you know?
We had that exact thing go on. Great Commodore or Great Pyrenees. Shepherd, Blue Hill Farm.
Yes.
Barking and barking at night, had chickens that was watching, a sheep that was watching, write the farm bylaw. I don't know whatever took place with it, but they were adamant that it was driving them singing, and they were like, well, I'm sorry, it's farm. So that, it's, it's a really hard thing to do. Because you're, if you're a farmer and you've got a dog protecting your flock, or even your crops, and he's out there barking, he's doing his job. Even though it's two A M in the morning. So how do you get, how do you work that around?
Yeah, I mean, I think the way that it's written in here, that would be allowed noise because it's related to agricultural production.
Well, I think just somewhere between paragraph three, what was that, eleven?
It's a two C versus one.
I think probably the right way to do it would be in the first thing where it says animal noises, it should say except for.
And it's just agriculture, I think we just need to have, make certain that that's in there, because we are right to farm bylaw right now, so.
Yeah. That is, I think, what I thought about it, and that's a good catch. Yeah.
Um, okay, so I had a couple of other things. In one, A, radio musical instruments, there's plenty of any radio topics that amplify their musical instruments, loudspeaker, et cetera. We're basically ruling them out entirely. Does that mean no one can ever have a band for any reason at any time?
No, because there's something that says except for duly permitted. Further on.
Right, but we have no permitting process, to my knowledge.
Oh, sure. No, there's, you can have, you permit for that.
For what, for having a band?
Yes, for having like a tent, party, yeah, if you're going to have a tent, it's a, you have a permit for that.
You couldn't even have a band in your, well, does anyone have a big enough house? Probably not.
Well, I'm trying to think of like, what kind of a band are you thinking of, someone practicing for band, their band?
Oh, no, I meant like if you had a retirement party, or an anniversary party, or a birthday party, or a Fourth of July party, or a, or a New Year's party, whatever.
I think it's just, you get around it by saying, you know, duly permitted.
As long as we have a permit process for a party, I guess that's cool.
I, you know, I don't know if it's a party permit, but I, I'm pretty certain that if you have a tent, you have to have a permit for the tent, because it's a temporary structure.
I don't, no, you don't.
We do have a special event permit.
Special event permit, okay.
And I think.
I thought they only needed it for booze.
No, it addresses music and parking and a couple other things.
Doesn't Don do something with tents?
He does.
If you're gonna have, yeah, so I, I think if you're gonna have a tent bigger than like a ten by ten pop-up, and you're gonna have people gathering under it.
Should we, if we're gonna do that, should we actually say, mention permitting? We do it, it does at the bottom? Is that correct? Other remedies enforcement, where does it say permits? Do we permit?
To, E.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have it, right?
Duly licensed permit, you're otherwise allowed by a governmental body.
Fair.
Yeah, I mean, I think the idea being, if you're playing loud music, that's incredibly loud. It's not good for your neighbors.
I totally agree, it's not good for your neighbors. I just wanted to allow for the fact that there's a big difference between somebody who's. I totally agree, it's not good for your neighbors. I just want to allow for the fact that there's a big difference between somebody who's doing it on the regular and an occasional special event. It's not like, you know, I, I, I've never had an anniversary party, but if I made it to fortieth anniversary, I might want to. If I make it that long and I'm still alive, I might freaking want a band and dancing, even if it's in my wheelchair.
It will be.
Thanks a lot.
So one, one issue with, with saying if it's duly permitted, you can't just say, hey, I'm permitted. I've got permits for all these people here, this, that and the other, so we have to just be cautious of.
That is true, they might be able to.
For instance, of permitting, you know, all of a sudden now we're going down a wormhole, it's still, okay, what's the definition of duly permitted?
That is good.
I mean, that's one problem, the more.
The more rules you make, right?
More policies you create, the more lawyers you have.
But we don't have a policy and there are problems. And if you can come up with a better way to this, other than saying, please be a good neighbor, I don't agree with it.
Well, I think it's just a matter of, of drawing them up and just keep going through it until we work it all out, you know, and it seems like it reads invincible.
Um, I'm gonna suggest that, this is gonna sound terrible, but if they're gonna do it three times, I'm not sure three hundred dollars is enough for the third time. Because there are people that will just keep paying it. And while that's great for the coppers, it's not great for the neighbors.
So no of the keys, it's our property now.
There is, so there is at the, at the end, and I, I actually changed those fines a little bit.
Okay, from what?
Because the whole idea being, I wanted to make the, well, I didn't, the only way I changed was it said no less than one hundred dollars and no less than two hundred. I said no more than, because I think the whole idea of this is, is if someone's seriously disturbing the peace, the police can just go after them for that. So this is supposed to be for something less serious.
Gotcha.
And if it's a huge fine, then they're probably just gonna keep giving them verbal warnings, cause they won't wanna say a hundred dollars. Whereas a hundred dollars is kind of a nice middle ground where it's something you can actually enforce and say.
But the problem we ran into last year was a repeated situation that was very loud and they didn't even wanna enforce the law for that either.
I think because it's such a high bar. I think because you're bringing someone to court over, I think that's the, that's the difficult thing and that's what this is trying to get at is.
You don't have documented decibels at the timeframe of what you did it. You know, I'm standing here, I can hear this, only you're on my property, you can't do that on my property, cause you weren't invited here, so.
Right, on my property.
So it, it does, it, it's, it's a difficult threshold to jump onto.
And the question is, would the violation hold?
And would the fine hold?
That's running?
Yeah.
Could we hold them accountable for the violation if it's difficult to prove? I mean, I don't know, if the cop issues a ticket because it violates the bylaw, what's the recourse that somebody has to come complain to us and we're gonna say, if the cop says you were violating law, girl, hold on.
Your permit to operate is tied to those charges.
I like the way you think, sir.
Well, that's, that's the only tooth, right? That's the only way you can bite back. Say, look, you, we know you have enough money to pay these fines and do them once a week. However, if, if it happens on a continuous basis, your permit to operate is gonna be suspended because you're not operating within the.
Scope of the permit we're in. Do we have to spell something like that out right in the, well, I imagine we might.
No, I'm not that deep, but I don't.
No, did we, I'm assuming this is just you, Donna, the, cancel all the minimum three?
No.
Which is fair, I wasn't succeeding, she should be, I just was clarifying.
Well, I think, I think it's gonna have to be at some point.
Yes, but the question is, how far do we wanna go before we do that, because it's unreasonable.
I definitely think the idea of having that, that little lightning bolt in there. Or, or something like that, that, that's strong. You've gotta have something substantial. A, it'll keep people from wanting to do it. If it's three hundred bucks and this camp has got forty people from Boston for a weekend, how much are they making? At three hundred, that's just part, that's the very first line in your item.
And well, well, so for, for the camp that would fix it, I don't know what it would mean for, there have been some individuals who have regularly played exceedingly loud music bothering their neighbors' livelihood. Um, I don't, I don't know what recourse we'd have there, right? They're, they're clearly not permitted. They're just playing music.
Yeah, well, there's two things, right? There's the ones that are permitted, that are large organizations.
Right.
And then there's the private individual who's just like, well, you know.
Right, and for that person, I think the fine is completely appropriate.
Higher, then you just have to fight them harder, you know? Everybody seems to like to after your driver's license for everything, so maybe we can't.
I don't, I just stay licensed, I don't know if we can go after that. Cause it, it hasn't been a problem that it's huge with noise, has it? I do, historically, I don't know how to call it.
Originally, it was, it was all their, the rage, it was the noise.
Okay.
But I think.
That's subsided.
So, well, either that or you know what happens?
They get used to it.
You get ear deaf to it, you just don't hear it as much. My, my friends live right on the camp. And after working there for a while, you don't even realize it. It's like living next to an airport, unless of course it's the Barrington Airport, but then it's way too loud.
Okay.
So how do we want to proceed on the noise bylaw? Do we want to involve Donna and see what we could legally retire the permits of the camp?
I think that we kinda owe the people who came here and the people from the past.
What teeth, we could ask specifically, what teeth can we actually put in there to make it both enforceable and like serious enough that offenders will recognize the authority?
And say, damn, that hurts.
Yeah.
You know, but it's, it's gonna happen somehow.
And not.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would offer as just into talk to the council.
The other, the other question that I'll probably ask her is how do we deal with, we're saying that noises from activities which have been permitted are exempt, but what if we permit, you know, a wedding, but it's four AM in the morning and it's blaring or whatever, we permit a camp?
Well, there has to be, well, there's parameters to everything.
The permit has to say that shutdown kind. Cause personally, I think, you know, I think that it's reasonable for a special event that isn't a frequent thing to say midnight and not nine PM. Like, come on, we're not babies. Once, and even if you are a baby, my baby, good deal with a loud noise for three hours, one day, you know, in five years. So I, I don't think we should expect people to never celebrate past ten PM.
No, and you know, you don't, you invite your neighbors, we got to.
Yeah, but you just put, but the permit has a time, right?
Yeah, no, a- absolutely, there's a timeframe in which.
Right.
So that's the.
All right, so I will bring that to Donna.
Excellent, well done, senor.
The, in, the employee handbook, uh, Sophia reached out to me and she wants to talk to me. She just reached out to me this afternoon, so I'll go talk to her, okay?
Yeah.
And I'll spare us.
And I know she wants, you know, she had, she's kinda focused on something, so in my, in my later week, but I, I will say I did look at it. Um, specifically for this stuff you mentioned, I, I, I'm not sure, I mean, I looked for, eh, I actually have notes. I try to be good, cause my old brain doesn't always keep it. Um, so I looked through, like, looking on discipline and termination. I, I wasn't finding for those two things, um, an issue where it was in multiple places that doesn't look like it's important and intentional, right? Because if you have it under a general policy and you also have it under anti-discrimination, you have to have those as separate things. The fact that it seems repetitive, I think, is intentional and probably appropriate. Um, that was my feeling about that one, like, I, if there are more specific things that you had?
Yeah, I mean, I could, I could find that. I, like I said, I, when I went through, I didn't get into the details because I just felt like there were over urging concerns, but I'll talk them over with Sophia.
It didn't look that big to me, the, the, the need, but I mean, maybe if I saw that, I'd pull it off.
I just felt like we're in a little bit of a new situation with the select board town administrator and HR director. And there were situations and I don't have them right with me.
The authority, who the person that needs to be the right, right?
Who is doing what and in what order. And yes, it, it's, different processes are going to evolve different ways. But it really needs to be fleshed out.
That was the, oh, that was the only thing, that was, was, aren't you ready?
Yeah.
That was the only thing I did agree, needed to be carefully checked, because it is part of our system that some things appropriately go to HR or TA or both, and some things come up chained to us, right? But both of those are true, so no single wording is gonna cover every situation. I don't see how you, how, and I think hiring authority made it in there to cover people that weren't hired by the select board. Like the Concom came. Right, so, or would that even include the library director? I, I don't know.
I don't know on all these, because you know, the other thing that's happened is the Concom came to us and said, we'd like to appoint this agent and we want you, the select board to appoint them. And I think in the past, sometimes the select board approves that appointment and sometimes, you know, one time that I was on the select board and said, actually it's just the Concom. So I don't know really all that. It gets confusing.
It is confusing, but all I'm saying is because it is confusing, and I do think there are, there are a number of different cases because of the complexity of it, it may end up being that there are, are multiple people mentioned because, but that could lead to a problem. So I'm agreeing with you, it needs to be fleshed out. I'm just saying, it's not like we can do a global replace and say that it's always this.
No, I agree. I mean, it's a complicated relationship. I agree.
It's crazy, that's all I'm saying. Right, exactly, exactly. So I, so great, meet with her and I just, if there are specific issues you want me to also look at, let, let me know what they are, because, you know, I looked through the things that you mentioned and I didn't, nothing really twigged except that hiring authority issue.
Yeah.
Um, but I, I, you know, it's not like I don't believe there was something, I just didn't, I'm not saying that what the way you think.
Yeah, I didn't point, I didn't point it out specifically and that's my fault. Uh, I will meet with Sophia though.
No, that's okay. Okay.
Um, I hate to backtrack, but I just wanted to point out in the noise bylaw.
Yeah.
Uh, cause it goes with something later in the agenda, which is Kathy Trion reached out about noise, deleted mufflers, and so I put that in the noise bylaw.
Which is sensible, not that there's really, I, I mean, basically there's nothing that can be done, except if the cop happens to be heard, they can go after them, but once the person passes by, if the person isn't even a Monterey resident, is driving through, by the time someone.
I think there are some regular offenders, so.
Ah, ah, well, that, that's another matter.
Um, so.
Right, like, if they're driving through.
Yeah, yeah, of course. Well, that's all we can do.
Yeah, exactly.
We're limited. Okay, and we discussed five, a new business and six is local cultural council appointment, Maggie Barkin.
Right.
Which I believe is a three-year appointment. Melissa's nodding yes. So I would move to reappoint Maggie Barkin to the local cultural council for a period, term of three years.
I second that.
There's seconds, is there any discussion?
Is she willing to serve? Yes, okay.
Yes.
Just checking, because we've had situations where we reappointed someone where they weren't, so.
Okay, uh, we'll call a vote on that.
Yes.
And yes, let's see unanimous approval. Thank you, Maggie.
Thank you, Maggie.
Um, seven is short-term rental tax.
So you guys, did you guys get the thing I sent out?
I did.
Okay.
I don't know where we're gonna, uh, make it happen.
Pardon?
How do you make it happen?
Um, we vote on it, we vote on it. It's right out of MGL, the town just has to accept it. We have to agree on what the percentages are and the state collects the money. Right off of the internet platforms, the, the people with, that are short-term renting through Airbnb or whatever, those platforms collect the money, send them to the state and we get a quarterly check. That is, that, like, could it be easy?
So is it, I just needed a little clarification, I unfortunately didn't do it on free search, but is it the select board votes put on the town meeting board or the planning board? Because I remember there was something else.
So, so far as I can tell, the planning board claims that that tax is not under the permit. That, that is what Tom said to me, I had the discussion with him three times and each time he said, we don't do taxes, we only do zoning. This isn't zoning, it's taxes. I, there's only two bodies that ever put forward things except for citizens, right? The planning board for zoning and us. So I'm gonna say it's us, you wanna check, go ahead and check with Donna.
Well, I just remembered, so I remembered when Egremont did something related to this, and the problem is there's a number of things that you can do. This is one of them. And.
It's a straight up tax though.
I'm just curious, cause Egremont and Great Barrington have done it.
Right.
I'm just gonna go, and if I had that time before the meeting or whatever, but figure out what they did, that's all. I mean, I think, is anyone opposed to the, to tax?
Okay, I'm happy. I don't know, for three of us, I'm sure.
My concern, because I didn't click on your three links, although I just didn't have the time to do it, so yeah, was enforcement. But if you say that it's all done on the base platform.
The state collects the money.
That is the absolute way to do it.
Inform, if we wanted to regulate whether they can do it, that would involve enforcement issues, but this.
Well, then you had a question about, um, like, how does that affect somebody renting their house in, you know, forever?
Oh, a long-term rental? I don't think it does, because it's strictly a short-term rental.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, if you, if you make a long-term rental agreement with someone, even through a Realtor, it's not on an online platform and it's not.
So it's the online platform that we wanna try to.
Plus, I think short-term rentals have a specific definition, it's less than ninety days.
Okay, so.
Maybe less than thirty days, actually.
How are they permitted to be?
They are not.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
And technically, I will be honest with you, technically, any short-term rental in the residential area in our town is technically illegal according to the Supreme Digital Order, right?
I, I read that.
Um, it is not grandfathered, it is a business practice and that's specifically excluded in our bylaws, but the only way to go after that is to do an enforcement order and be willing to pay the court costs, cause they're gonna fight it. I personally, I would like to see us take on figuring out a way to moderate the impact of short-term rentals on the town community, but I'm not sure that this is the right moment to do that. And I realize that taxing it might then discourage us from otherwise regulating it, cause it might reduce the amount of income we got from doing it, if we're saying can't do it as much. But I still think that, I think it's having an impact on our town, both in housing and other issues. But at least if we're gonna not regulate it, at least we could be getting some income from it to, to help with what the drain is on our resources, cause I do think it is.
I mean, cause it's also a public safety hazard that these homes are not necessarily sprinklered or they may not have proper smoke or carbon or heat protection in the homes.
Or people who know how to use a toaster.
Several years ago, we almost lost several people in a house up the street from your dad, just beside them. When there was a carbon monoxide issue and they were, they were lucky that they lived through it. And it was a, I believe it was a rental. Or it was the owner after it was anyhow, but, but I believe that, that, you know, Don was, was real concerned about the public safety aspect of these short-term rentals, cause there's no, there's no way to go in and say, this place is, is good to go, I mean.
They're on list, it's hotels.
Yeah, basically, exactly, exactly.
I, I mean, and I know that Sean was telling me there's one, I think it was unfair to you, that, uh, the toaster, like, they were there like five times in the course of one season, because different renters kept setting off the fire alarm, cause they couldn't toast. Like, I don't know if it was a broken toaster, they were repeatedly like inept at posting, but how hard is it to make toast? I don't know, go out to breakfast, people. So.
I think the, another good thing about this is it's not, the town isn't doing the administrative work.
Yeah, well, that's not one free, it's cause that, I mean, that doesn't, all of a sudden now we have somebody that's collecting taxes. We already have that, but.
Right.
No, that, that was what my concern is, is how in the world are we gonna implement this? But if you say it's all done, so.
And Egremont and Barrington have been, you know, passed it and.
And it's just one more line I am that comes in as a surplus.
Yep, it would just be some money to us and it was very hard. I tried to dip up around and see how many STRs we have, it's really hard to ascertain. Because when you search society, if you search on Monterey, adjacent communities come up, the same posting will come up multiple times, you can't just count them, so it's a little tricky, but we have a few.
Yeah, you're right.
Anyway, so we're, we're good for it, but you wanna research.
Yeah, it looks like, um, Melissa just sent, uh, what Egremont specific articles were.
Thank you, Melissa, you're on the ball.
There's three articles related to it, so they were just, I, I would assume it's something the select board just adds to the warrant.
And it would just be done by special book?
I think it's just like a regular article on the warrant, but we'd have to look into that to.
Well, either way, now we have the.
Right, so, right, these are the same. Right, so, right, these are the same three that I sent you guys.
Yeah.
Um, it's the, you have to pass.
Also same three, though.
Right, it's from the same part, it's MGL, uh, sixty-four G, three A is to do the basically room occupancy. And you have to pass that in order to pass the other two, which are, one is ru, uh, owner occupied and the other is the people who get a business to run it for them, occupied, so covered both.
All right.
All right.
Good.
So, all right, good, where's that leave us?
Excellent.
It will put on the warrant.
Um, but we gonna study it any further to make certain that what we put on the warrant is correct?
It's language right out of MGL, I mean, it's not too hard, right, yeah.
Okay, so, we're gonna transfer that and that's.
The only question would be, do we wanna go with the six percent and three percent, which is the max, six percent for the
Yeah.
occupancy and three percent for the community capacity, the max is, yeah, I, I'm fine with that, but that would be the topic of discussion, right?
Yeah. I mean, once we have the, a draft warrant, and we can go over the articles at any point, just same thing with the noise bylaw, we're a little bit ahead of the game, which is good, so we, we can, uh, if you have second thoughts on it, we can have that discussion.
Okay. Okay.
Um, but I think we seem to all be in favor of it, so we'll just add it.
Put it on there.
Uh, well, it's a, it's a pain in the throat, you know, I mean.
And we could use a little more revenue.
Why not?
Um, so the private ways, I asked Donna, and interestingly, her first question right away was does the poor conditions of private roads impede or prevent access by emergency vehicles, which I had not mentioned.
To where, to the residents or?
I think that's what she was saying, yeah, I mean, there's nowhere that you have to go through a private road to get back on a public road.
So.
I don't think so.
No, there is.
One that Jim mentioned that would be applicable there was when West Road, um, when they had explosives up there. It was a problem, they had to fix the road because they couldn't get them out.
Yeah, I, and you, she's, I think what she's saying is every time that, uh, someone at a home on a private road calls nine-one-one,
Mm-hmm.
the emergency vehicles are going off of public roads onto private roads and what happens if those private roads can't handle a fire truck?
Right.
Or if in the event of a truck going up it, the truck becomes damaged or stuck, or stuck and damaged.
So I don't know, I don't know where she's headed, but she sent that and then it's been a day, so I think she's probably coming up with a longer answer.
Right, oh, I understand.
But that may be the way that we have to attack this issue.
Um, the, the other part of that, so the other situation that arose is when the poor maintenance resulted in damage to the public way, so it wasn't about emergency access up the private road, it was about public access along the public way.
Well, that's what I, that's what I asked about.
Right, right.
And I, and when she asked this question, I said, yes, it does sometimes. That's not really what we're asking, we were asking more, so what happens when West, West Street washes out onto fifty-seven? But if you wanna tell, if we have to use this as the reason why we're making you fix your road.
Yeah, then, yeah, right, okay.
I think, I think, let's use both, because it's, because it gives us.
Two options, more options, yeah.
Both, both, both problems. Okay, we have somebody that, that lives a mile up the road that's under arrest, because he did something very bad and he's got problems up there and we, they've gotta go up and get this stuff out. I would think that he would be responsible for whatever it took to get back up there.
One would hope, I mean, he has a company, right, yeah.
It's kinda like the train derailment in Colombia, right, I mean, they're trying to get, train company to pay for all of that. His problem, he created the problem.
Right.
It's your feet.
But if it's a nine-one-one call, it may not be the fault of the person that was the nine-one-one call.
Well, it might be more about preventative.
Right, exactly.
Okay, your road's not up to the standards, you need to improve it.
Right.
I mean, that's just, okay, sure, uh, fine, and then I go along and, you know, Grandma Moses up the street from me on the same road has a stroke and, you know, you, you can't get up to Grandma Moses, because we asked Joe Schmo to fix the road a year ago, so meanwhile, what happens to Grandma Moses?
Well, right now, it's just, we're not doing anything, so.
Right, so, anything we did would be better.
Well, yeah, we'll have to see what she, what she.
Yeah, let's arrange a setup, I guess.
Okay.
Um, opioid settlement doc, so Melissa, if I'm not mistaken, they're all ready to sign, you're just asking for authorization to do that? Just so we get some money?
Yeah, cause it's all online, the signings, I was just gonna sign for the town.
Um, I would move for Melissa to sign on behalf of the town for the opioid settlement money.
Second.
Any other discussion on that? Call a vote?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, so that's unanimous approval. Thanks for being on that, Melissa. Um, electric aggregation.
This is the same thing, they're, they're putting it back out to bid a little early, because they think the rate, we might get a better rate now. And, um, I attended a meeting the other day and basically once it comes out, the paperwork for the authorizations to sign, we have like a day to get the signature, so you, your meeting may not fall within that timeframe. So if you just give me the permission to sign, then after that, you'll be responsible for, um, whether we'll join and, and all that stuff and we're gonna accept the rate, but this just gives us permission to, for them to act on behalf of Monterey.
Okay, I would move that Melissa sign, uh, electric aggregation documents for bidding.
Second.
Is there any other discussion on that?
No.
Call a vote?
Yes.
Yes, unanimous approval. Um, C is the buy recycle policy.
We just needed to update our buy recycle policy to continue to be able to get the, um, RDP funds from DEP, which is the recycling dividends program through the Department of Environmental Protection. And this is the, the one they have on their, their website.
It looks, it looked good to me.
The only thing that I noticed is, um, board of selection, where it changes.
Select word.
Okay.
But other than that, cause that shouldn't impact, I mean, we'd still be in compliance, that's just a technicality, but.
I don't, I don't think we're required to use their exact language as long as they.
Yeah, no.
So that's an easy one.
Yeah.
Move to accept the recycled product procurement policy with the one change being change board of selection to select board.
Second.
Is there any other discussion on that? Any public comment?
Thanks for working on that, Melissa.
Yeah, no problem.
All right, we'll call a vote.
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, so that's unanimous approval and we will, or I think there's one signature or something. Um, the Berkshire municipal IT cybersecurity project.
Yes, so, um, probably about a month ago, BRPC reached out to me to see if Monterey was interested in, um, being part of this grant they were applying for and I said yes, so now they've gotten the grant, which is through the Western Region Homeland Security Advising Council. And they're gonna work with local communities to establish a pilot regional municipal cybersecurity program. Over the next five and a half months, BRPC will work with all the participating communities to understand our existing IT services that are employed, our IT policies, um, what kind of training employees get, uh, inventory of existing hardware, software, backup printers, routers, et cetera. And these assessments will then be compared to the math cyber centers municipal minimum baseline of cybersecurity and determine actions a community should take for improvement, so. They are gonna be having a meeting in the next couple of months and basically what I need to know is if you definitely wanna participate, there is no cost to the town. Work will be complete by July thirty-first of this year with recommendations for future funding, um, with multi-year support.
Anybody see any downsides to having someone do a good assessment of our cybersecurity?
No.
Me neither.
I can't imagine what it's all gonna be.
As long as you don't get those emails every week.
No, that program's over.
Yeah, I know. Cause my inbox went down by fifty percent.
Oh my god.
Um, okay, then I, do you need any motion from us or you just needed that, to know that we're on board?
Yeah, just to know that you're on board and it's okay with us, um, participating.
I'm on board.
Me too.
Absolutely.
Okay, so, the board is on board. Um, I just found this on the printer, or in a printer copy, which is just in the noise bylaw.
Okay.
I just couldn't find it earlier.
Okay.
Um, which does, so I put on here just Kathy Trion's letter, and so the specific language that I put in, well, they said the town of Paxton had something where it was bad to work on your engine, work on your car, and I didn't feel like that was even a good thing to have anywhere.
Yeah.
But I did say excessive engine noise, the operation of illegally modified and excessively noisy motor vehicles at any time on public roads.
Which is pretty clear and some, and, and properly limiting, I'd say.
Could we, I, I wondered about that, I mean, I thought if someone.
I didn't want them taking out.
But if someone within town. Takes the muffler off their.
Car and we can hear, uh, causing a problem?
Yeah, then it's the same thing, you're right.
Just because you're on your own property, doesn't mean you can run around in circles of your house all the time.
Within, within Monterey, if you leave out the roads completely, then it's, it doesn't matter where they are.
So why don't all delete on public roads?
Yeah.
Um, the other thing is if the police actually catch someone for that, they can just charge them with having an illegally modified motor vehicle.
Yeah.
Uh, but this is just another thing that we could use. So, because I thought Kathy raised a good point.
She did?
She does, it's just, my only point was like, unlike someone who's in a building playing loud music or whatever, somebody who's driving through, by the time someone calls it in, unless the cop happened to be sitting there and saw it go by and went after them.
Well, what happens is that every day at eight-thirty-eight, they drive by, and at four-fifteen, they drive by.
Right.
I mean, I, I have that go on with my house, it's like, I hear them coming, I don't know where I can hear them from, but it's usually somewhere down around the flats and I can usually hear them just as they hit the top of it and then go down, it's about the end of it. But you hear them that whole way, coming and going. No, it's motorcycle, huh, but extraordinary loud bike.
Well, I mean, and, and I, you know, if it's a consistent problem in a consistent time of day, that's when you can call up the police and say, hey, there's somebody with a badly modified muffler doing this every single day, could you sit there a couple of days at this hour and see if you can.
Well, my concern about, about it being a motorcycle is that you don't chase a bike and they're going very, to me, it's the speed which they're going. I mean, this guy has a very loud bike and he drives extraordinarily fast and there's always somebody on back.
Well, which, which basically means they can get them on speeding and illegal mod.
Well, and, yeah, or you're gonna scrape them off the road someday, so, you know, they, I would love to see somebody just say, hey, look, slow down, down. But yeah, there, the noise, I thought Kathy's letter was awesome.
Yeah.
It was really good.
Thanks for adding that.
But yeah, so, it's a piece of work in work.
Um, yes, and I mean, that's up to the police to decide, they know when to chase a bike, you know, that's their call.
Yeah, right, right. Absolutely.
Um,
I mean, the thing is, I don't know why anybody chases anybody, cause you got a license plate, you know, that's what you need, I suppose.
Right.
Um.
Can we talk about a couple of unanticipated businesses before we go to minutes?
Yes, I just had that letter from the insurance, which they sent to me and I didn't have, they just said, let me know if you have any, uh,
Right.
questions and I didn't, but I just wanted to make sure no one else did either.
I know. I mean, it's pretty straightforward.
They didn't. Okay, good.
Um, okay, two things, one is, I would like us to finalize our thoughts on the part-time sick leave policy, so we can get it the language finalized and get it into the policy, so we can get those adjustment means to the budget. The second is, I wanna give you guys a briefing on last night's ambulance need.
I would like to hear that, that would be good.
Um, you wanna do that one first?
Sure.
Okay, the short version is Sean was correct and basically they're viewing this as, this is a service, this is our fee, pay this fee or don't get the service. Right, so they're definitely not amenable in this round at this time to changing the amount of the assessment. There's a, like, I will now go into their reasoning behind this, but the upshot at the end of the day is we either look at it as what you said the other, last time we talked about it, it's fifty dollars a person to have ambulance coverage and we pay it, or we don't and then we have to find other ambulance coverage, because they're, they're just, any community that doesn't pay it is not going to be served.
Is that what they said?
That is what they said.
So I'm always just curious about that, because of those laws from back when they, the laws that basically say hospitals can't turn people away, right, if you show up at a hospital, you have to be treated regardless of your ability to pay. I don't know how, I don't know how it relates to ambulances.
I suspect what would happen is they no longer be the, like, right now, as I understand it, if someone calls in and I'm on Monterey, that's ambulance service, the dispatcher sends us the AS preferentially.
Yes, but the thing is.
So you would have to find a different preferential character.
The thing is, um, Otis, and look, at the end of the day, I think where this is headed is we're gonna pay Southern Berkshire, because they're really good and they have paramedics. But when we get New Marlboro or Sanitsfield or Otis ambulance to respond to this town, I don't believe that we pay them, because it's just kind of a mutual aid agreement, and so and sometimes Southern Berkshire goes to or intercepts those other ambulances. And they're not asking for a dime from them, but I guess that's neither here nor there, they need, they are asking for the money, I just don't know what really could they actually do if we didn't pay, I mean, would they just, I don't think that ambulances wouldn't be sent to Monterey, but.
So, I mean.
I wanna maintain a good relationship with them, so I don't wanna even explore that, but.
So meanwhile, I will give you some other details from meeting, um, I did feel like they did a pretty decent job of talking about, um, their budget and, um, Pete, Pete Zaleski from Alfred asked some really good, on their finance, may ask some very good questions. Um, essentially, it comes down to, and I think we heard this before from them, that, um, reimbursements from insurance is down and the number of calls for uninsured are up, so obviously, you're not getting any money from people who don't have the money. The, this is happening nationally with the reimbursements going down and it actually is causing problems, there are ambulance companies that are closing, because they don't, they don't have the funding to run, um, and that, that's true, like, I know that it's true, so, um, the reason they're giving for the way they're assessing is that they're assessing they're looking at it as we're paying for their readiness for twenty-four-seven availability, they're not charging us per trip, they're charging us to be their provider and that they're there when we need them. Um, they're using the, I, she said they weren't using EQV, but they're basically using real estate valuation as the fundamental one, because that's what's used for schools. I, are meeting again in three weeks, because both Alfred and Egremont also wanna talk about long-term viability. I feel like they're not giving, you know, so Charlie spoke very, was Charlie who's the chief of the fire department in Barrington, spoke very eloquent, quaintly about, um, that it's about availability, that a lot of the, a large percentage of the Great Barrington calls are not actually for Great Barrington taxpayers. They're for like, you know, nursing homes with residents that are from other communities or what have you, but I would point out that the nursing homes are commercial taxpayers, that Butter Nut is a commercial taxpayer. Um, and that Barrington, and Shekel to a lesser extent, but certainly Barrington, has income coming from its commercial community, which is something that the smaller towns don't have. And I, I feel like assessing only on the basis of property values completely ignores the difference in that revenue stream in a way that I don't think it's fair to the small communities that don't really have a commercial history. Um, so that's something we would bring up for the longer term thing, but I don't think we're gonna change their mind for this year and it's certainly in Great Barrington's best interest to not look at things that way, um, and see if there's anything else that was, oh, Great Barrington also said that they, um, they have housed the ambulance upon occasion for Southern Berkshire. the ambulance upon occasion for Southern Berkshire at no cost and that they're occasionally providing EMTs to cover shifts. Which is, you know, a good cooperative agreement and I understand that. I don't, I don't know that that comes out to a hundred thousand dollar difference in in support, but they're real things.
So we're gonna pay the fifty thousand?
I think so, I think if we want, if we want to be covered, we're gonna pay fifty thousand.
I think it, I, it's too bad that all they looked at was valuations of the towns and we're getting the absolute short end of the stick in this, but.
I I don't disagree, but I don't think there was wiggle room. I mean, I I put out all our arguments on the table there. And I don't think there's anything to be, I mean, could we go to the press and have an ugly discussion?
No, I mean.
I don't think there's anything to be gained from it.
Well, the other thing is, there's Otis, San Antonio, New Marlboro. And long-term, if we felt we really were being charged unfairly by Southern Berkshire, we could look at combining and making a second regional ambulance, which was actually seems to be the conclusions of the study that was done a few years ago on Southern Berkshire ambulance. They recommended creating a second ambulance to serve these four towns of similar professionalism.
Which is gonna be more than fifty grand a year.
So fifty grand's not bad.
Especially considering we're not vehicles to maintain, we don't have buildings to maintain, staff.
Right. Oh, and the other factor that came to it into increasing costs, not surprisingly, is there's a smaller pipeline, there are fewer people becoming EMTs and paramedics. There are many people retiring from it and a lot of people leaving that workforce to get jobs that not only pay better, but have better hours.
Yeah.
So shockingly, it's hard to come by people, so they're having to pay more, not, it's, that's a familiar tidbit, isn't it not?
I mean, just the training that these guys take, that people take in an ambulance.
Yeah, no question.
Be a, even just as a, as a driver of an ambulance, you know, you've got a lot of training. And that means somebody else being hired to do that training.
Yeah.
In a facility somewhere.
Yeah.
You know, so.
All right, I guess we'll discuss with the finance committee.
Right.
Why discuss them?
Because of the budget.
To let them know.
But that's what you do.
Would you, you know what, if you like, I'll, I can drop a little memo to them just summarizing.
To the finance committee?
Yeah, summarizing what happened.
Well, we're meeting with them, I think, next week.
True, but I can still.
Well, if you wanna summarize it.
I can, I can just send them a little memo, so it tells what transpired, just to keep you in the loop.
Yeah.
Like, there's no harm in keeping people up to date. All right, this sick leave thing.
Yeah.
So, um.
Sick leave, yes.
Sick, sick time for part-time employees, and don't hackle the boom. You're so, you're quiet anyway.
No, I'm not leaving her alone.
Okay, um, the mask law, so.
I'm still gonna have to sell you.
What mask law would require if we were a private entity instead of an exempt municipality would be, I mean, a one hour of sick time for thirty hours worked for all employees.
Before you go into that, can I, can, is it possible that we just say, if you're sick on the day you're supposed to work, you just take the day off? Without all of this, you've had three years of twenty-two hours a year and this, so you're entitled to nine hours. I mean, can we just cut through the crap and just say, if Tuesday is your shift and you're sick, you're sick?
I, well, I don't. Probably not, because, because what, so what if somebody calls in sick ten times in a row?
Why? Well, then.
And you say, well, you're sick, so you just stay sick. Like, that's why you have rules, because there are, there are always people who abuse the rules, Scott. I wish there weren't, but if you don't have a rule, you can't hold them accountable.
Well, I think that you can add some type of things like that, where if you're sick twice, then that's, you know, I mean, how many sick days are we talking about? It's people that are working on a library shift, and how sick are these people? How sick is anyone?
I mean, it's not just a library, it's any part-time worker. And the answer would be, the state law says you accrue one hour for every thirty hours you work up to a maximum of forty hours. And it's hours because people are working different time shifts, right? Somebody's working eight, somebody's working four.
Is that also for like full-time people, I mean, so.
No, it's a lot more for full-time people. We are currently giving for our full-time people, they, the equivalent fifty days accrue a year, that's a hundred and twenty hours. Which account, which amounts.
You're allowed fifty sick days a year?
Fifteen, fifteen, a hundred and twenty hours equivalent. And that amounts to one hour accrued for every seventeen point four hours worked. I'm sorry about the math, it's not my fault, I just ran the numbers. Um, so we are actually allowing full-time people to accrue more. On the day, full-time, you can accrue up to ninety days and you carry it over. So I I don't think that one hour for every thirty hours worked up to forty hours is a big deal. Like, I think that the majority of people probably aren't gonna, they can't, you can carry over the forty, but you can't accrue more than forty. There's no payout, not at the end of the year, not at the end of the month.
Can we limit it to that, to where there is no, at the end of the year, you go back to zero?
No, because that means that you have no sick time, what if you get, if you, it's January fifteenth and you get a flu? You would have no sick time.
So does that mean if you didn't use them from the last year, also I have fifteen days accrued?
So if you, if you accumulate, accumulate up to forty hours if you're a part-time worker, that's not fifteen days, right?
Directly? No, five days.
It's five days, you would just carry that with you. But if you didn't use it in a whole year, you're not the kind of person that's gonna abuse it and you carry that with you.
You know?
So if you get sick in January, you can get sick.
Or what if at the end of six years of being a part-time librarian, you have five weeks of sick time?
You don't, you cannot accrue more than forty day, forty hours.
Ever.
Ever.
Oh.
That's the cap, period, forty hour cap. Just like it's a ninety day cap for a permanent employee, but it's a forty hour cap for a permanent employee.
Yeah, exactly.
Good question, but it's, I can't. It would begin accruing from day one of hire, but you can't use it until the ninetieth calendar day after you're hired, if you're new hire.
Even if you're sick?
That appears to be the way they do it.
Okay, so don't get sick until you can get sick.
We can, we can change that. Right, we can change that and you can say, you can, you can accumulate it from day of hire, you can use it whenever, we don't have to make that rule. That, that was what was recommended by mask, but I'm willing to do it. Do you think that's a bad rule?
It's sixty-three employees.
Yeah.
And if you get fifteen or twenty of them repelling at the same time, and you got six hundred and eighty students to feed, and all of a sudden you got twelve of your staff gone out partying because they got thirty-eight days to party with. And you would just go insane.
Where are these?
Navy Maritime Academy.
Oh my god.
It was just, I mean, because they had all these policies and every, and everybody, they would, and you knew it was coming. Biggest weekend of the year, everybody's gonna go out and get sick, I'm sick, thank you, not sick.
Um, actually, that brings up an interesting point, there are, we could add, since, I know you hate adding rules, but there was language in there that there is, there, you can't hold them accountable if they're taking sick time before or after a holiday.
Yeah.
You, do you want, you want me to draft some of that for, for that too?
No.
Okay.
It's not my rule, I'm not here to enforce it.
All right. Um, current part-timers starting balance is dictated by how long they've been an employee. So I was proposing that a year or less of service, they were, they would be granted twenty hours of sick time and two or more years of service would be, would get to forty hours. As though, because they've already been here. So even though we're starting this policy, they would just be granted that, right, retroactively.
Nice, very nice excuse.
And, I mean, I, I don't think it, it's not gonna cost us anything unless they use it. As far as I can see, it, the policy would not cost the town anything budgetarily, except for the few cases where we have to cover their shift, which would include the library. So basically, I think the way it works now is at the transfer station, if it happens during the week, someone from a highway covers, and if it happens on the weekend, usually we end up covering with a highway with overtime. And I think most of the other offices would just close the office. There is a contingency, and I don't know if we actually need to have a language on it, where if a part-time employee is sick, they, but they wish to rework the hours, it's, we can't ask them to, but if they wish to, so let's say I knew I was gonna have my hip replaced and I wanted to save up my five days of time, but I got a cold and I, or COVID or whatever, I could say, I'll, I'll come in for the, you know, another day for the five hours so that it takes it off the sick time. And I, I think that's a perfectly reasonable policy to have, that if people want to work those hours and not not work those hours, they should be able to do so.
And bank the forty.
And, and bank their, whatever the hours they used for that illness was. In the event an employee is unable to report to work because of an illness or injury, the employee shall notify the department head or town administrator through text or phone call as soon as possible. If the department head is told, the employee shall notify the town administrator of their absence. The department head shall notify the town administrator. An employee shall be required to produce a doctor's note for sick leave of three or more consecutive days to be presented to the town administrator upon their return to work. And sick leave has to be taken in one hour increments. Because the part-time employees are all by the hour and they have shifts of different hours, but, you know, fif, like, if you're fifteen minutes late because you were at a doctor's appointment, it, who wants to keep track of the non-hour pieces? It becomes a, it will keep you back there. That's why the one-hour increment thing is there. Are you good with this? Should we go ahead and?
I think you two should go ahead with this.
We too, but he can't vote on it, so you have to vote on it.
Why?
Because he has, his parents are both part-time employees of now.
So that affects.
Yes, this is why you have to vote on it.
I will, I will, I will.
Okay, all right.
Figured that was, I'll see that I won't have anything to do with by the time it gets enacted.
You're here now.
I'm here now, so here we are.
Yes, so here we are, and we need to pass it. I'm making a motion that we.
I accept the motion.
Yeah, I guess.
I know what the motion was.
Okay, wait.
That you're gonna adopt it.
I'm making a motion to adopt a sick time for part-time employees policy as previously indicated and is discussed.
Yes, approved, second.
All in favor? Aye, unanimous.
The Mercure.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We do that.
How much do we wanna do the minutes?
I don't care.
Why not? We, it's gonna take a long time?
No.
I didn't leave them there. I didn't get your angels.
Can I say thank you very much?
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mickey.
Um, I didn't have any for this, for these two. So would you be able to print them out now by any chance?
Yep, if you just give me a minute.
Thank you. All right, I'll go.
Sooner.
Actually.
You only have to make two copies, I'll just use my, my online copy.
I use telepathic.
Scott Stibbe, Chair of the Board of Assessors, is requesting counsel.
I'm not gonna argue with it, but I am a little offended that are asking about whether or not a particular situation is appropriate, is being viewed as interfering with our operation. I think it's our job to ask about whether particular costs are reasonable, but I, if he wants to consult counsel and oppose it.
I think the que, I mean, I think the question here, I'm not sure that he really fleshed it out, but it kinda goes back to the CONCON agent. What jurisdiction does this select board have over, like, appointing the CONCON agent? Um, I don't know, I know that we have an elected board of assessors, so I assume they run the assessor's office, but I don't know where that starts and ends, because there's certainly things that involve the select board of the finance committee.
I mean, we still control the budget, even if, or or do they get a budget line whether we agree to it or not?
No, I think that the select board and the finance committee do the budget and the select board signs the warrant.
In which case it is inappropriate.
Do the budget, but I don't know.
And to ask the questions about the budget.
Yeah, I don't think that's what this is about, I mean, I think that, I think that, I mean, I'm not saying that's not what it's about, but if who appoints like a principal assessor and the assessor's clerk? And if the principal assessor, you know, is that, who disciplines an assessor, who fires an assessor, who hires an assessor?
Right.
Is it all the board of assessors, do they break a recommendation to the select board? Um, I would assume, I, I mean, I don't wanna answer these questions myself.
I, I'm okay, I, I'm just saying, like, I, I think, I don't think we ask inappropriate questions about, what, you know, did we get more than one bid on the services, is the bid in line with what we need? I, I think a lot of those questions were reasonable, even if they're upset by them. But your point is very well taken, and I, I'm okay with him consulting with counsel to see what's legal, but in the end, if we're being asked to put something on the budget, I not only, I, I think it's not only our right, I think it's our obligation to ask budgetary questions.
No, I, I, and I agree with you, I, I don't think that the board of assessors makes their own budget. It's made in conjunction with the town administration, the select board, the finance committee, and presented to town meeting. I think that there is a question, there are questions for me though about where, if any, influence does select board have in the management of the assessor's office? Or is it all the board of assessors? And I don't think he really flashed that out here as much, but I could even urge him to kinda get the answer to that because that would be good for us to know.
What interference is he referring to?
I believe, I think you can answer if you want, I believe we, we questioned the amount for the consultant for the five-year valuation.
Uh huh.
And in the scope of work, it, I believe a question was raised as to whether the scope of work overlapped with the principal assessor's job description. Like, so are they both doing the same job or is it in addition to just because of the five-year valuation? And there was some upset as to the fact that we were asking that question. Maybe it was how it was posed, but I don't think it was an unreasonable question. If, if you have someone whose job description includes doing a particular task and you're asking a consultant to also do that particular task, asking why there's an overlap there is a reasonable question. And it may be that this particular task requires something that the principal assessor can't do for some reason, but that's, it's a reasonable question to ask, even if there's an answer to it.
Uh huh. And what was the answer?
It's unclear to me that there was a precise answer to that particular question. That, that I believe the answer was that they needed the help because of the complexity of the evaluation.
Yeah, I mean, so what, what happens every year is they, you employ a consultant to help them with the more complex assessing portion.
Yeah, right.
Usually for a few thousand dollars. Every five years, with the more complicated five-year revow, they employ a consultant for more services. And I think that it there, it may not be a black and white of this is what is done by the consultant and this is what is done by the board of assessors and the principal assessor and the assessor's clerk, like the assessor's office. And I'm, I'm a little bit leery to.
Micromanage?
To micromanage, I guess, not to ask questions, but I'm a little bit leery to do that. And also, I think if anything comes up with physical capabilities, we need to consult with Sophia and think about things like reasonable accommodation. If we have an employee who's doing a job and for illness or injury, can't complete that some part of their job, but the town can make a reasonable accommodation, I think we're compelled to. And that's a, to not proceed sensitively with that could put the town in li, in liability.
I would agree that that got inappropriately broached, but my understanding from Don is that that, that really ends up having nothing to do with it, that the actual physical site visits are basically under control. At least from our conversations, I understood that the issue really is about dealing with the changes. Correct me if you understood differently, but dealing with the changes in mask requirements for the assessor's office and the complexity of the reevaluation and that Don needs additional support from the specialist, the consultant. So that's my understanding of what the response from the assessor's office was and that it isn't about site visits.
Well, he also says trying to reduce for no apparent reason his salary. Why, what's, how did that get approached? Why? What's, how did that get approached?
You wanna cover that one?
I'd like somebody to.
You were there for that.
Uh, yeah.
Yeah.
And what was the outcome of that? I was under the impression that, at the timeframe that the principal assessor was, that the, that the reason why that was not going to go forward was also in that same chain of emails. That the response from the consultant was that, yes, we are doing this work that sometimes the principal assessor would do, but that in this instance, we are, he is getting more work to do in the office than actually out in the field. And he just elaborated on one of the reasons. Because of his ability to go out into the field is becoming limited due to health.
Yeah, and.
Whatever it may be.
I don't know.
Just curious how, how all sudden this letter states that this guy wants to see counsel, because we've had to fight with town officials to prevent the efforts to reduce for no apparent reason the salary of the principal. I never heard that, that, that that was a, an approach that we were taking. I, I don't remember that ever being brought up, other than that one particular day, and it certainly wasn't a policy we were creating, or that we were looking to take his salary and reduce it.
No, we didn't, we didn't act on, I think the question is important going forward, I mean, I think the suggestion itself was problematic. And for the reasons I stated before, and and could, has a lot of legal hurdles that I frankly think we didn't need to get too far into. I mean, we asked questions because it's a budget item, but at a certain point, if an office that runs smoothly for years, and then a, a special project comes up where they request a consultant, which they usually request a consultant for, I assume that they need a consultant. So.
I think it was just the jump in the cost of the consultant that caught everyone's attention.
Yeah.
Well, it also only hadn't been for five years, and I can't recall the.
Six last time.
The, yeah.
And now it's fourteen-five.
Well, what has it gone up?
Everything else is going up, right?
So, so, so I, I think it is a question for going forward though, what if, what if the select board did say, oh, that's a good idea, let's do that. Is it the select board, how, could the board of assessors say, no, we control the assessor's office, we're not cutting salary? I mean, I, I don't, I think it was far from ever happening anyway, for obvious reasons, but.
Well, when, when something like that gets mentioned, it, it rattles most people. It would rattle me if I was in the town hall that all sudden people are saying that, you know, somebody's salary should get cut because they can't get out and run through a field, even though they might be doing more work. I just think that it's, it's kind of a lowly way to go about saving some money on a budget.
One, possibly illegal.
Well, well, that's, that's even secondary, of course, well, that should be first.
I was, that's sort of secondary, it might be primary.
Number one is, is, it's called morale. You know? Good Lord, Don's been working for the town for so many years, and he's done it very quietly and very well. If it wasn't for Don and his office, I don't know, you know, where would any ass- town be if it wasn't for great assessors? It's one of the reasons why we have such good numbers. And, and just to think that perhaps somebody looked and thought, oh, here's a way that maybe we can save six thousand dollars or something to offset this cost. I just think that that's an underhanded methodology of going about business in town hall. And so, you know, I, I wish that he was here to, to just explain to me a little clearer exactly where that started and came from.
Scott.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think he just wants.
I thought you meant me, Scott. No, Scott, that's, that's, yeah, definitely, I understand.
Yeah, Scott, yeah, I think he wants to clarify, and, and like I said, I don't know the answers to these questions. Where does the, at what point, like Susan pointed out, the select board does do the budget with the finance committee. So we can do that, but when can the board of assessors say, no, we're the board of assessors and this is how the assessor's office?
Well, it'd be good to understand how that office does run. Because in my time before, I don't recall ever having that answer. You know?
Were you around when the principal, current principal assessor was appointed?
Don?
Yeah.
I believe so. He may have been there before me too, though.
Don was here before me, so it was over seventeen years ago.
Yeah.
So I just don't know how that works, like, does the board make?
I mean, and if, let's just say the principal assessor being whoever it would be, and their salary was to retire, and somebody else came in, does the assessor's office say, no, that's the salary for, for a junior assessor that's doing the same work?
Do they set it, or does the select board?
Precisely.
And I, my sense is that they do, but it'd be good to have some answers. So.
I mean, because we set everybody else's salary. Right?
Uh, it depends, Concom agent, I mean, if it's.
Who's elected, we set elected officials' salaries even, don't we?
Um, town meeting does, but yeah.
Right, but we put it on the warrant.
It's on warrant, it's on warrant, it's on warrant. So, you know, I, I don't know how that happens, but I, I'm, I'm not necessarily into giving huge raises, but I'm certainly not into taking something monthly. I mean, unless they really are just, you know, not doing anything.
So I would move to approve the Scott Sibyl's request for counsel.
Yes, second.
There's a second, any other discussion? We'll call a vote, yes?
Yes.
What?
I'm just, I had something I was gonna ask.
Well, we're voting, we got two yeses on the table.
Oh, no, that was a yes.
And your yes. So that's unanimous approval. Um, I am gonna grab the minutes from the printer. I'll be right back.
Okay, be back in a minute. I doubt it'll come till three AM, I remember.
It's always the way I read it. I gotta tell you that one thing that really annoys me about this email server is that, that search function is terrible.
Yeah, I would.
Yes.
Yeah, I understand myself.
The search function is terrible. Yeah.
Um, the sick policy, has that affected July first?
I think it would be yes. Did I not, did I send you the language? I'll, I'll, no, we sent it now.
Is it this way, for whatever reason?
Yeah, it's two different, one is last Tuesday, one is this last Wednesday. Fourteen.
Nothing. Finance committee's meeting?
Yeah, we were all there, you were there.
I know I was there, but I would think that was the finance committee's meeting.
No, we're doing, we, we're doing our own minute for the meeting. Too.
Because?
Because we met. It can't just be posted as, as one.
As one board?
Board. If, if we're gonna meet as well, and we have to post and do minutes as well.
Okay. So this is two fourteen?
Mm-hmm. Am I on there already?
Yes.
Okay. Wait, I couldn't make one for me, but you said you'd have.
You didn't, you didn't have one.
Right, and you didn't have.
You didn't mind.
Are your comments on that?
I didn't.
You didn't, so the, the only comments are mine?
Yes.
Okay, that's mine, then I don't need to look at it, that's why I said it, but I wanted to make sure. Let me know if you want to fix that.
Uh, Frank Abbott just has two Ts.
Okay.
That's my first change.
Was Sibyl spelled correct, by the way? It might be E R.
It is.
Oh, it's correct.
It's Sibyl, okay.
Eileen wants to increase revenues.
Well, that's what we're doing, the tax.
Yeah, but I mean, it's not a business where you go out and you just sell more candy to increase revenues. Right, it's called taxation.
We make new taxes, yeah.
Right, I mean, is she approaching this as a, as a municipality, or is it running the general store budget type thing?
I think it might be a question of, you know, are there, are there, is our fee structure where we have fees at meeting its needs, that that came up when we were talking about Concom fees, for example. So she's just trying to be consistent, every, that's my impression. I don't know how else we could do it.
Talk to the cows come home about whether the dump should fund itself, but.
Yeah. I always thought cows came home pretty regularly. Am I wrong? Like, we may get milked anyway. I don't know why that expression even exists.
So other than that one change to Abbott.
That's drastic.
I'll move through two fourteen.
I have, I agree.
And that's the second, and we'll vote?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, that's unanimous, group vote, two fourteen.
I like number two.
Two fifteen.
Who is the lady who sent us the email requesting we all contact her? Galushy?
Uh, Vanjuci.
Vanjuci. Any reason for such a letter?
I, I, I did answer.
Taxpayer.
Yeah, I answered her from my perspective, as far as I, my understanding of why we had made the choices we made.
Okay.
And she and I had a little conversation. I, I view it as useful from the perspective of when we're at town meeting and people ask questions, I now have thoughtful answers since I've had to flesh them out, so.
Good, now, I'm just curious as to if I was missing something from.
I mean, you know, I only answered for myself, but.
No, I think, I think it was just, I think she was just as a taxpayer.
It's my little man.
Where the money's coming from.
Yeah.
Right.
I think there was more to it than that, but, okay.
Counsel. Uh, two.
The wrong counsel?
Yeah.
I missed one.
Look, can I ask a question? Not has anything to do with these minutes? Has to do with the police cruiser? Why was that removed?
To limit, I mean, to cut the budget.
What do you want to cut the budget for, we're still sitting there very clear in the smooth?
I.
And it's gonna increase our, our expenses a lot more yet next year.
I think the, the operating budget is looking pretty good. I think it's up about three, between three and four percent over what we asked for town meeting from last year, and less than two percent, including the additions we made at special town meetings. The, the special articles were way up this year.
Well, not way up, but yeah. What was the biggest special article that went up? Seven Berkshire volunteer ambulance plan jumped us fifty-five thousand dollars. That's almost the cost of a cruiser.
Yeah.
And then next year, we're still gonna have to buy that cruiser, and several other things.
And a bunch of other things.
We have the money, we have the room in our budget this year.
Well, I, I don't, I don't know, the thing is, Scott, we were up, we were at the last meeting, the special articles were up five hundred eighty-five.
Don't look at it like that. Look at it as, as the bottom line.
And we were, and we were dipping into stabilization.
I know, I hate to do that, I don't, I hate that.
Yeah. We were dipping in stabilization to pay for the cruiser. This year.
This year.
Why? Oh, yeah, yeah, I did hear that.
The down, the downside of
However.
The current plan though is that we're using stabilization and not replacing it.
We're, we're not using it, are we?
Aren't we?
No, we aren't. That's, I think that's a special stabilization just for the health, the life insurance, other than that, I think we're not using it.
Okay, there's no yellow, right.
Just curious as to how that became.
Right, and just to be clear, they used the stabilization for the police cruiser was just a recommendation. You guys could have moved anything around, you could use, you could have did it in a loan, you could have raised and appropriated, that was just a suggestion.
Yeah, we could, I think the concern with raise and appropriate is our two percent or three percent, between three and four percent increase from what we asked from town meeting last year was good, but every additional, so it's only going up a few percent, which is what we wanna see, but then if we start raising and appropriating for special articles, but the tax rate's gonna go up, and the other thing is this, this last year we used four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in free cash to lower the tax rate. So the tax rate actually went down this year. We're not gonna have anything close to that, so the tax rate, even if we level fund it, is gonna shoot up.
Well, because we don't have the money.
Because we don't have four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in free cash to apply against it.
Thankfully, well. Yeah, but last year was a, an anomaly.
Yeah.
That wasn't true.
Doesn't hold that way.
Yeah, it's just, I think if we can mitigate.
I brought this one from my, my feeling on, on chat, on two and a half, props is two and a half. I think you should always have as much available to you as you could possibly ever want or need, and not use it if you don't need it, or have it if you have it. There's some people around that think that an underwrite is important. I think the underwrite is the death, the death toll. Because if, God forbid, something does happen, you don't have it. And now you gotta scramble for your next year's budget to try to come in under that fake budget that you created to get your tax rate to drop down of one point one percent, or to save somebody two hundred and forty dollars on a tax bill. I'm all about saving people money. But I honestly, I've never seen a budget process the way this is going now, with people so nervous about everything and not looking into the future like they should be. And I'm, the one, the only, only reason I'm sitting here today was because that goon couldn't hold it together. And somebody had to come in, and I felt like my nine years with the budget would help. I feel like I'm talking to a stone, that there isn't anybody in this table that gets it. And listening to Frank and Eileen, I read, Eileen.
Oh, you got it.
Really makes me wonder, whose freaking budget is this? And what they're doing, I think, is a great service. Zero budgeting, go from bottom up. But that's something that you don't do the one year and make it all happen. That's something that takes time to find that out. You don't go through and examine and crisscross and cut and slash to the point where we don't know if we have enough in there. And then use so much stabilization that you have nothing left. And then not put enough back in, and then wait for next year when we're gonna have up to here with bills to pay, when this year we're not. I just get the feeling that, I can say this, that I'm glad I'm not gonna be sitting at this table next year when you have the same thing to do, because you're gonna wish. Because you're gonna wish that this year you took that levy limit to its max and keep it there and pay things and get things stabilized and pay for things this year because next year everything's gonna be higher and higher and higher and you just look at what's coming down the pipe. And it's gonna be a nightmare, mark my words.
I, I have to say that I don't, I, I think that some of the things we did cut, and I agreed with cutting them, but upon reflection, I, especially because I don't think I was thinking about next years.
Well, what's next year?
Next year is the following year that you're gonna have to concern yourself with. If you've got room this year, if you've got room this year, be thankful. And that was one of the reasons, one of the reasons you're thankful is because the fact that last year it was a high. I mean, you, you don't go, don't go backwards. It's like taking your own money and saying, well, I don't need this, um, get rid of it. You know, and then all of a sudden you do need it, or you don't have it, now you can't do anything, so.
I mean, the whole capital budget plan was laid out with re, repurchasing things at a certain level. And I guess it does make sense to periodically reevaluate how frequent that is. But reevaluating by just constantly punting things down the road might not be the right way.
It's terrible, it's terrible.
Yeah, I, I don't think it's.
Don't, don't treat this like it's, like it's a, um, it's, it's Walmart, you know, you don't treat it like it's a town.
And even if we put several of those things back in there and didn't use stabilization to do it, we would still be well under our, right, we would still be well under the line.
Oh, because the levy limit's one point two million dollars, it would go up. Yeah, but I mean, that's not, I don't think that's a guideline for what we should be doing.
It really comes down to when, when people get the tax rate increase, that's gonna be an issue, right? Like, and I, and I get that, right? So it's not, what I'm saying is it's not really about the levy, that's what I was trying to say. I think it's about the levy limit, I think it's about trying to not raise people's taxes too much, right? Which is the concept of levy limit, but we're talking about the reality of it.
Right.
Um, but I, I, I did have second thoughts after last night about looking at the capital plan and I, I'm concerned that things are gonna stack up next year and we'll just keep punting them down the road.
They won't stack up, they'll stack up to the point where you can't do anything.
And what we'll do is we'll punt other ones down the road. Right, what we're gonna do is just keep skidding things further down the road and, you know, you and I both, I agree, I don't wanna overspend, but I think you and I both agree that always making decisions to just move a decision.
No, I, I, I understand, but the thing is, so the one ton truck we were pulled is not a concern right now.
I think we could, yeah, wear that one out, I'm worried about it.
It's just, the concern is about stacking. And the cruiser is partially a maintenance and replacement decision, but it's partially an operational decision of, this isn't, we've had, we've been running three cruisers and the third one needs to be replaced. This is, we previously ran with two cruisers and now this is an operational question of, do we want to have a third cruiser in the fleet? And so I think that is coming, more than just saying.
You're like, you need three in the fleet.
It's, it's a very different question than saying, you know, we have two cruisers and the second one needs to be replaced. I will just push it off a year between that and saying, do we wanna use the oldest one to justify purchasing a second new one? Because it was already used to justify the purchase of the most recent we got. Uh, in, in theory, it would have just gone the way of old vehicles that we don't need anymore, but it got hung onto for certain reasons. And so if the department can run on two cruisers like it previously has, and I'm not saying that it can with the changing, but if it can, then it's, would be unwise to go and buy a third one, I guess is what I'm saying. More than just saying, I, I'm not agreeing that we need three. And then saying, we'll kick it down the road.
Right, you're saying, do we actually?
Do we need three?
Um.
But rather, but rather than voting to not put the cruiser in, wouldn't it have been better to have Brian come in and explain his vision and why he is keeping three?
He did that a long time ago in the budget process.
He did, but last night it didn't come across that way when the boards voted.
Well, was Brian here to?
No.
He was not.
Right.
I, I feel like part of the problem is that we keep going over the same territory again, again, it's very frustrating.
It, it is, and that's, it's like banging your head against the wall. It's like, when is, when do we just put the budget together and say, thank you very much? And it is our budget, by the way. I don't know who's told you that it isn't, but you've been listening to the wrong people. It's the freaking select board's warrant and our budget. They, they give us insight and advice, but it's up to us at the end of the day. It's the administration to this town as to how best to make it happen. And I don't believe that we're getting a fair deal. It's taking way too long. I like the idea that they're vetting things out fully. But what they need to do is they need to start the vetting process for next year. It's too, it's too late. This needs to get finalized. And if you're in, if we're.
It's not too late for us to put a couple of things back that we just went.
No, of course it is.
You know, but I, I'm just looking at this, is this accurate that the proposed change to budget after use of outside fence is actually down point two nine percent?
I don't even know what that number is because it gets very confusing with three thousand and stuff.
It gets way too confusing.
Don't, but this number is important, one point three eight. But this one hundred eighteen.
But that doesn't include the special articles, does it?
No, it's, that's, that's, we gotta do this at a different time.
Okay.
No, I agree, I agree, I, I, I think that this is one thing that needs to happen. Don Clausen used to come in.
He was on the finance committee?
No, when he was a, a full assessor.
Principal assessor.
And he would sit down and go through every single thing with us about where we are, where we stand, what it's gonna mean, what it's gonna do to the tax rate. And we know, we know, everything that we have in front of us flies. Or need say, it's not flying, then we have to dig in. I like the idea that they try to go back and get all these budgets to come back to zero and then work forward. I think that's a great work in progress. But I don't think it's a good progress to try to do it in one season and to sit there and say, okay, well, we've dissected this down to the point where we think this is gonna make it happen in certain departments. And then to use our free cash as readily as we have, and this just makes me crazy.
I think.
It just happened, let me say this, and then I'm just gonna shut up. I.
Was she been there last night?
I.
I know.
I, I don't think that anybody should have been there last night. I think it should have been the finance committee. They make the recommendations, they hand it to us and then we take it from there. That's the way I would perceive it. Um, I just think that we're in an okay place. We should stay in an okay place and not make us not okay next year by being okay this year. Or trying to get better this year is not gonna help us next year. This just doesn't work that way. You're gonna be on the outseat next year. What are you gonna do then? When you have a lot of stuff to, to put on? You're looking at a million and a half dollars in expenditures.
I know, and I think, I, I just think this year's gonna be tough regardless because of what we, because of how we did things last year. We probably should have taken, taken in hindsight a hundred and, a hundred thousand dollars instead of lower, lowering the tax rate, put in stabilization.
Exactly.
But it didn't happen.
You've always had to stabilize.
So it didn't happen and we are where we are now and, uh.
Well, then, don't make the same mistakes twenty years in a row.
Yeah, and so that's why, I mean, when we were going over last night, was the first time I realized we were suggesting spending, and I know it's just a suggestion, we could have raised and appropriated or borrowed, uh, but.
And we still can, I just wanna point out, we still.
Oh, I know, it's February. We have to sign the warrant until seven days before town meeting.
I know, but it's just, we're talking about it like it's a done deal. And I hate to go, you know, make a decision, then go back and go back and forth. But if we made a bad decision and we catch it, we shouldn't go forward with it anyway, just for the record.
I don't think they're a bad decision.
You don't make decisions, don't make decisions at those meetings. Don't, what are you doing that for? The decision comes around this table, around the paper, not a bunch of people trying to figure everything out. Listen, a good select board member listens. Thank you for your input, thank you, thank you, thank you, all listen to that and then they're gonna come back and then the three select board members hash it out. You start getting nine people involved.
Well, at some point, we have to put finalizing the budget on our agenda. Yes?
Yes, but I mean, it's February, we're not behind the April thing, but.
Yes. We're not, yay, let's make sure to say so.
Scott says a little bit, okay. Two council spelling is the only change that I have in two fifteen, other than that, did you get that?
And. So there's a, there's council spelling, yeah, there's council spelling here and there's the one misspelling of somebody's name there.
Oh, I didn't have any others.
It was Abbott, right, or on the first, on the other one, on the other one, right, yeah.
No, other, that was on the other side. Um, so I moved to group two fifteen with that one change.
Second.
Uh, vote.
Yes.
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 That's unanimous approval. You have to edit the version.
I do, I, let me make sure I put the.
Yeah, so if you could get those to Melissa, sometimes I do that.
Right, yeah.
If you could get those to Melissa, the final versions, that'd be great, please.
I will. And where's the, the other thing was only, uh, Frank's name, right?
Yes.
Okay, that's easy. I'll send this to you right after the meeting.
And.
Do we have anything else?
No, we don't actually. I mean, comments and questions from the public and I see Mickey on the line.
Still, you're still hanging in there, Mickey?
She's a trigger.
Oh, I know.
Um.
No, she's not here. Where do you see this?
Caller O one. Uh, was, was there anything for the agenda next week? I mean, do we wanna discuss the budget? We have a joint meeting with the finance committee next Tuesday.
Not partaking.
Okay.
Only because I have a job and I just, I can't, I can't do two days in a row.
All right, so.
But you can let them know. I mean, I love the work that they're trying to do, but I just think that they're running a lot a little different.
And other than that, are we, are we all set?
Yeah, I make a motion.
But, I, I mean, yeah.
Second.
I think we're all set.
Uh, call vote on the motion to adjourn.
Right, yeah.
Yes, unanimous, meeting adjourned at eight oh three PM.